Oh, no, mine was still, my drive was still like.
I know, I always live there too. Like, oh crap. Should I have left it there?
Oh, I'm sure.
Huh? The now better.
No, he loves.
That is very true.
You got a plaque where they got off the night. My wife has a fit. I said, it'll stay around. But they had to look until they found it. We were crying and we went out back to the front door.
Oh, what are you kidding me?
In the eavesdrop, this cat has been swept off the roof.
Okay, seven o'clock. Like calling me in to order. Roll call.
Barlow.
Here.
Bergeron.
Here.
Brem.
Here.
Devroy.
Here.
McLean.
Here.
Rezegi.
Here.
Rocha. Stensel Barton.
Here.
Tassava.
Here. Entertained motion to excuse Councilmember Rocha.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, most of my Brem, supported by McLean. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say aye. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right. Everybody get a chance to look at the agenda.
The motion to approve the agenda is written.
Second.
Okay, motion by McLean, supported by Rezegi. Uh, to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say aye. Uh, in your packet, you have the minutes of the October 27th, 2025 regular meeting minutes. Entertained motion to approve.
I move that we approve the minutes of the October 27th, 2025 regular meeting, Your Honor.
Support. Okay, motion by Stansel Barton, supported by Rezegi, to approve the minutes of October 27th, 2025 regular meeting. Any discussion? Roll call.
McLean.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Devroy.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Also in your packet, you have the minutes of the November 5th, 2025 special council meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of the November 5th special council meeting. Support.
Okay, motion by Devroy, supported by McLean, to approve the minutes of November 5th, 2025 special council meeting minutes. Any discussion? Roll call.
Brem.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Devroy.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes.
Okay, public hearing, we have none. Public comment. This time, anybody would like to get up and address the council, I'll give you three minutes. Tell me who you're. No further questions, roll call. Roll call. Roll call.
Brem.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Tassava. Rezegi.
Yes.
Devroy.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, consider approval of the purchase of a K-65 NFPA compliant replacement thermal imaging camera for Moses Fire Equipment in the amount of $5,710 for the fire department. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve that purchase.
Second.
Okay, motion by McLean, supported by Barlow, to approve the purchase of K-65 NFPA compliant replacement thermal imaging camera for Moses Fire Equipment, uh, for $5,710. Any discussion?
As a matter of fact, I do. Is there something specific about the NFPA compliance for thermal imaging cameras? Because I found the same one for $3,900. It, but it didn't say. I mean, it, it's actually a, almost stat for stat identical. Is, there's something about the NFPA National Fire Protection Association, uh, compliance sticker?
So, yes, there is. So, the, the goal of the fire department is to be a NFPA compliant fire department.
Complete for every.
For everything. Okay, so that, so i- if you purchase equipment that's not NFPA compliant, it backs you out from being able to hit that standard. So, the, the difference in the camera is the camera is required. When it first boots up, it has to come on, um, in a, in monochrome, which is black and white.
Right.
Okay. So it has to, it has to fire up in monochrome, and then we can convert it over to color once. So that's what the NFPA standard is. Standard is it has to boot up in, in, uh, monochrome.
Okay, I, I just read, I was just looking stat for stat.
Right, right.
I didn't.
There isn't, there isn't a lot of difference in the cameras.
Okay.
Um, they're, they're pretty much the same. Um, I'm not sure where you even, if you looked at the other quotes I gave you, even the other, the non, the 55, which is not compliant, was still $6,500. So, so they actually quoted me higher for a 60, for a 55 than a 65 from the other company.
Right, I, I just took stats through them and, and found very one-on-one data.
Right.
And you have a FLIR right now. What happens to it when you're done?
It's, it's pretty much done. It's, um, it, it will no longer take any updates. We can't do any software updates on it. It, it's, the flow that we currently have is, was, was, I think it was 2010. So it, um, it's, it's already outdated, and it won't take the new software.
What will happen to it, the camera?
Well, we'll keep it in the department. We won't get rid of that. But it won't be our first in, it won't be our first in piece of equipment.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? So we have a motion and support. No further questions, roll call.
Barlow.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Devroy.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
After that explanation, yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes.
Okay, next item, consider approving, uh, removal of two trees at 226 North Washington Street from top, from top notch tree care in the amount of $8,120. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion, sir.
I will second it.
Okay, motion by Barlow, supported by Stansel Barton, to approve removal of two trees at 226 North Washington Street from top notch tree care in the amount of $8,120. Discussion, anybody, any questions?
I was hoping, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I was hoping you made a mistake and it was supposed to be Madison Street.
I thought it was Green.
That's on the RFP, it's gonna come out later this week.
Madison Street.
Don't we have a lot more trees to cut down this year, or just two?
Yeah, we do. Uh, yes and no. Um, we have the, uh, GIS survey that's going on around, uh, doing a really good job of determining which ones are dead and alive. But a lot of the dead ones that we have out there are less than 12 inches in diameter. So those are things that ourselves as DPS can take care of. So, a lot of them trees, I think, on the list that I have, for us, we have like 42 trees just for DPS. I think there's like 30 or 35 for the contractors, so.
Rob, will you explain to the council how dangerous these two trees are down there? They're right over the lady's house. They're rotten, it's gonna take a crane again. I'll let him explain, sorry.
No, you're fine. Um, I did, I personally went up and looked at it, um, took some pictures, I included in my memo. Um, you can stick your, actually stick your arm in there, probably about a foot and a half, right in there, and there's nothing in there, completely there. The whole tree over spans her house and her garage. Um, here, I think it was three years, two years ago, she had a limb and stuff go through her eve on her house. And if one of these limbs off in the tree comes down, it's gonna obliterate the house. We don't need that to happen anyway. So it is, and unfortunately, you can't take the back tree out without taking the front tree out. That's why there's two trees on here. There's one tree by the garage, which has to come out, for the big tree to come out. And it's a, it's a crane job. Uh, they gotta have, call in special equipment to come in and get it. So that's part of the reason for the added expenses.
Man, we have about 45 days left in the year. Is it gonna get done before then?
Um.
Can we guarantee? Because there's a 5% increase on his bid if it goes into January.
No, I believe that's 5% decrease.
Correct. In, in winter? Did I read that wrong? Oh, can you hold off, do it in January?
Well, I understand, because if the leaves were gone, it would be a 5% discount.
Oh, all right, I missed her.
They're scheduled January through March.
Yeah.
My only issue with this tree is it's right over her house. And I think it's the side of the house she sleeps in. I'm really surprised, because of the condition of the tree, something hasn't happened with some of these winds we've had.
I would think that we'd wanna do it as soon as possible.
I would think so, too.
Yeah, for safety, for sure.
Yeah.
Got some good pictures.
Thank you.
Uh, no further comment? Uh, we have a motion and support. Roll call.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Devroy.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes.
Item A, consider authorizing the division of the deputy treasurer and utility billing clerk positions and to approve the necessary budget amendment to support the position. Everybody get a chance to read, uh, city manager's memo? Do we have any questions or comments?
I'll make the motion to authorize the division of the deputy treasurer and utility billing clerk positions and to approve the necessary budget amendment to support the position.
I'll support that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by McLean, supported by Rezegi. Comments, questions? Roll call.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Devroy.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes.
Uh, next item, consider approval of the revised contract for the airport manager as presented. Do I hear a motion?
Your Honor, I, uh, I move that we consider approval of the revised contract for the airport manager as presented.
Support.
Okay, motion by Stansel Barton, supported by McLean, to approve the revised contract for airport manager as presented. Questions? Roll call.
McLean.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Ten, uh, Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Tripped over that one. Rezegi.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Devroy.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes.
Item G, consider scheduling a special workshop session of the city council and Brownfield redevelopment authority board for November 24th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. As night of the council meeting also.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support that motion.
Okay, motion by McLean, supported by Rezegi, to schedule a special workshop session of the city council and Brownfield redevelopment authority board for November 24th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Questions, comments?
Questions. What are we gonna be talking about, if that one compared to the one we talked about this past lesson?
So, um, you're gonna have a draft with some various options to discuss. That's the primary purpose.
Okay.
You'll have the draft in advance of the meeting, but we're trying to kind of fine tune more towards a final policy.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, approve, uh, scheduling a special workshop session for city council and Brownfield redevelopment authority board November 24th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say aye. Staff presentation, policy discussion, information regarding keeping of chickens.
Um, so you have requested that I put together some information regarding the current ordinance. Um, so I have a little bit of history, uh, in the memo regarding the planning commission's previous actions, as well as just a brief survey, um, with some additional information that you may or may not find, uh, useful. Um, so it's up to you whether you want to, um, add this to a future council meeting for discussion, or to refer the request to the planning commission, or take no action. Um, to date, just some information was requested, so that's entirely up to you.
Much pleasure.
I'd like to refer back to the planning commission.
Let's have a discussion first. Go ahead.
Um, Sarah, did you, did, when you did this research, um, I guess my question is, and you, you may not know the answer. Do, I mean, as far as comparison wise, do a lot of these communities have parcels that are over an acre? Or did they mention anything about it, or was?
It wasn't a part of what I asked, and it's gonna vary considerably by community. So importantly, um, our ordinance related to the keeping of chickens does not apply in the rural residential district, which is where our largest parcels are.
Okay.
There, the keeping of farm animals is allowed by rate. Um, so this only applies to our really smaller parcels, or more average-sized parcels for the city, uh, at least relative to our rural residential parcels. Um, there's several minor variations between these things. The, the only thing I was trying to highlight in this table was the maximum number of hens allowed. There's, there's other kinds of regulations and sort of smaller detailed degrees of differences that I didn't include in there.
So our rural residential, is that what you called it?
Mm-hmm.
Are the keeping of, uh, farm animals, does that also include chickens?
Yes.
Okay.
It includes poultry.
So we're just, okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
So I can, um, send out a copy of the, oh, it's so hard to read. Can you maybe, and not to put you on the spot, is it possible for you to pull up a copy of the zoning map where we can show where those parcels are located? You didn't talk about this before. I thought about including it in the packet, but the zoning map is so hard to see when it's in eight and a half by 11. Um.
Pretty much every RR property borders city limits.
Um, yes.
Yeah, there, there's no RR on the interior of the city. It's all the very outside edge of the city.
Oh, good job, Dan.
Well done, Dan.
Pretty quick, man, that's all right.
So it's that gray.
But, but not on the, not on the west end.
But, but not on the, not on the west end?
Yeah. Northwest, it's RR up there.
So it's all those larger parcels in that kind of funny gray-green color?
Oh.
You get up on the northeast side, and that's all residential up in there because of some of the developments. All these properties that are RR are mostly undeveloped, like Mill Street, there's a guy out there, he's got 7.9 acres. He's RR. Uh, and then there's, you get up on, uh, west of Tape Edition, that's all RR on the other side of Hillcrest. Or, uh, excuse me. Out on Cook Road, everything, uh, I think, Anna David back in there, that borders Jim Curry's property, that's RR. There's a spot over there on, I think on, uh, well, that's, on Center Street, Center Road, there's RR over there. Other than that, there's no other RR.
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate it.
Planning commission spent a lot of time on the original ordinance on this. They spent, I think, a year and a half. Uh, one of the comments I read was, uh, the state's trying to do something with it. Personally, I'd rather wait till the state does something, but that's up to the rest of you.
Like, what do you mean, do something?
Well, the, the state's talking about changing, uh, basically, you can have up to 25 chickens, I think, if you have a large enough parcel. But that's kind of stuff, that's kind of stalled in the, stalled in the agricultural department, I think, right now. No, you guys can do what you want. I'm just saying what, you know, how long it took the planning commission to work on this before. If you want to go back to the planning commission for consideration, the council can act on it. It's gotta be the planning commission.
Then I say throw it back to planning commission as well.
Wait, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I have, is that a motion?
Well, you wanna let Terry talk first?
I, you said the planning commission's already worked on it a year and a half.
Yeah, we, we worked on it.
It is stuck in some type of agricultural committee up in Lansing.
Yep.
And we don't know how long it'll be stuck there. Boy, we're in a rock and a hard place. I wanna do something, and I don't wanna wait six months, a year.
Hey, I'll make the motion to, uh, refer back to the planning commission.
Okay. Can we refer to them and give them a time limit, like five months?
No, you can't do that.
Fine.
Do it at work, they won't.
We'll, we'll do the best we can.
I'll support that motion.
A motion by McLean, supported by Rezegi, to refer the chicken ordinance back to the planning commission. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Oh, let's see. Where are we? Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Devroy.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Tassava.
No.
Can I ask a few clarifying questions? So is it your, or is this just going back to the planning commission for their general consideration for them to give you a recommendation? Do you have an expectation that they're going to act in some way to increase the number of chickens, and it's open to them to make a recommendation on what that is? Is this going to be something that is put on their work plan for them to work through in, in a prioritized way? Or is it your expectation that this is expedited in some way? Just wanna make sure that I'm giving them directions that are consistent with your expectations.
My expectation, and for just my voice, is that it's gonna be on their agenda and miss summer something from the Navy, is going to go there and speak and eloquently talk to them to do something.
Well, so, what typically happens is that the planning commission receives information and has consideration, and they may hold a public hearing on a proposed text amendment, at which time she would certainly be welcome to speak. But we're, we're not acting on a specific request from an applicant. That would be a different trajectory.
I think it should go to them to consider raising the amount of chickens based on parcel size.
I, well, what about, what about, uh, you know, I, the problem I have with, you can't, i- if you work it, you, you work through another ordinance, you change it, and the state comes along and changes it again, then we gotta change it again.
I know, but you're, you said that they are considering letting people have up to 25 chickens.
Well, it depends how much, how many acres you have.
Right. Well, I think that we can determine some reasonability.
Well, don't you think, though, that if we send it back to planning commission, the discussion should be about the information that the person that brought this up had in their packet? Uh, and I think, uh, did you supply that to us?
I, I did not, and I don't quite agree with that path forward. Um, whatever the house or the state is, is doing, that may or may not go anywhere. I don't think that that's why you guys are making this consideration. It's more because you feel that there should be more room for additional chickens, should lot sizes be larger. So I would encourage the pursuit of, uh, an ordinance text change that fits that goal, rather than trying to meet what may or may not happen at the state level, and then, and then the public can provide whatever input they, they feel they, they want to provide towards facilitating that goal.
You're talking about right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Questions? Roll call.
What do, what are we roll calling on?
Well, well, did we do a roll call on sending it back to planning commission? Well, we didn't, we didn't, we clarified what we're gonna ask for.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Yeah?
All right. Barlow.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Devroy.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Item B, state budget impacts on city of Hastings revenue.
Um, so the, um, estimates from the state are out about the impact of the changes that they've made to the budget on our revenue. Um, so with the elimination of the sales tax on gasoline, obviously, a portion of the sales tax comes back to municipalities. So since that's gone, um, we're losing out on that portion of revenue sharing, which is estimated to be about $16,329. However, there is a new public safety revenue sharing program, the details of which I have not grasped yet. Um, but I do know that they are anticipating will receive just shy of $30,000 as a result of that new revenue stream. They made multiple changes to road funding. Um, you'll see a, a letter that's been supplied in your packet regarding those kinds of things, if you're interested in learning more about those details. But this is expected to increase our transportation funds by about 33.4% um, next year, which is quite considerable. Um, so this is the first time we've really seen a significant increase in transportation funds for roads from the state in, in my career, uh, that I recall. So this is a good step in the right direction. I understand, um, from various sources that they're anticipating that the first payment from this will be issued in April, whereas we'll see some changes to revenue sharing here in December. Um, so if you would like any other more detailed information, I'm happy to provide that. But I really just wanted to give you an overview of the general effect that we can expect to see here at the city as a result of changes in the state's budget.
Questions?
Yes. Um, so they're eliminating the gas tax, but there, there's a bill in the House right now to get a new gas tax. So are we, are we assuming we're gonna get some money back on that deal?
So we will be getting, um, the, the replace, as it stands now, they eliminated the sales tax on gasoline. It's been replaced with a flat tax for fuel. And we will be receiving a portion of that for roads. That's part of the road funding.
Perfect, thank you.
I'm not familiar with what's in the House right now, but they, they move things around, so.
Also, they just increased the price.
This is all just the latest and greatest. It's all subject to change.
Any other questions? So do you feel this is a significant amount where we can maybe start scheduling, or not?
Scheduling what?
Well, seal coating, anything else we might do to kind of, on, on the roads that aren't bad yet, to kind of bring them up to the beat?
Um, so we have a road, um, maintenance sort of plan, um, but this will kind of make some of those things move a little bit more quickly. Um, and we may be able to consider different kinds of preventative maintenance treatments, um, that may be more appropriate to the different kinds of roads that we have. Um, so yeah, this is actionable funds, which is exciting.
Okay, so your, the first payment's gonna be in like April?
That's my understanding, yes.
Then you'll probably get a couple more after that?
Oh, yes. Yeah, they, they still aren't sure how they're gonna distribute it yet, if it's gonna be a lump sum, or if it's gonna be every other month, like our Act 51 fund. It's not going to be a part of the Act 51 distribution. It's something completely different. Um, so we haven't been told how we're gonna account for it yet. Um, 'cause to me, that means it's probably not gonna be in major or local streets. They may have us create another fund. It may just need to be tracked separately in some other way. Those are the, the details Linda gets to take care of.
Well, I had a young man email me last Friday. Uh, he's in government class at Hastings, and, uh, he had a plan for how we can fix our roads.
Excellent.
So I answered him back today and let him know about this revenue that we thought we were gonna get. And, and I told him about how we used to do it, and he's got some plans. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you a copy of his letter.
All right. I'd love to read it.
He had, he had some great ideas, so. I'm just glad that we're, you know, there, there's no way we, we could fix all the roads, but this'll give us some way where we can start planning for the future, so.
Bring him front, bring him in front of the council. We will grill him.
Any else?
Uh, no, unless there's any questions.
City manager report.
Um, so just a couple of things. We are accepting applications for a new cashier, accounts receivable clerk, um, 'cause the person in that position will be transitioning over, uh, with the retirement of another employee in the department. So that is available. Um, and now that you've voted to split the deputy treasurer and utility billing positions, we'll be hiring for that position soon as well. Um, so that is available now. Um, also I wanted to remind you that we will be closed tomorrow for Veterans Day.
Any questions? Okay, in your report, you have Chief Jordan's monthly report. Do you have anything to add?
Sure, I do tonight. First, you'll have to excuse the casual wear. I'm on vacation today. So, okay, a couple of things I wanted to cover. Um, if you looked in my report, um, you'll notice that we, we did it, we received a $7,500 grant from the Berry Commission, County Commission, um, which was, um, well-used for doing additional medical training for our last staff. So we got over 1,000 hours of training out of that, um, money. So that was a, that was certainly a good thing for us. And then secondly, the last, um, I have a new report in there, that the first time I put the report in was last, my last council meet, my last report, and I wasn't here to explain that. I didn't have any questions. So it's this Hass Alert, if you see that in there. So what, this is a system that we subscribe to, that those devices in the trucks that are used on traffic incidents, and it alerts drivers when we're out in the, when we're out in the highway. And so last month, it alerted 687 drivers that we were out in the, in the roadway, um, where we were, where we were affecting traffic flow. And year-to-date, we've had it for just over a year or so. Um, for this year was 9,000, so since January, we've alerted 9,327 drivers that were in the roadway. And, and the way that system works, it, it immediately, if they're using a GPS, or if they're driving certain vehicles, it actually, even if they're not using a GPS, it will, it will, it will, um, turn the, the radio will turn down, and it'll come with an alert, tell them that there's a traffic hazard ahead. And there's, uh, so we, we, we use it quite a bit. Um, and it works. So since we've had, we've had this two years, and we've done 17,000 drivers. So it just lets us know we're in the road and to pay attention, we're just ahead.
So that probably only works on newer vehicles, all right?
Uh, no, it, anyone that's using, it's on, uh, Apple iPhones. So if they're using an iPhone, if you use any type of a phone to do navigation, it will tell them. But as far as just interfering with normal, uh, AMF and radio trap, radios, then there has to be a newer vehicle.
And anybody can sign up for that?
It's, you have to sign up for it.
It happens.
It just happens automatically.
Oh, it does?
Yep, yep. So if you use Waze.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if you use Waze, it'll pop up.
Oh.
And it'll show that there's, there's an alert. We can get it, if we, if we have a long scene, we can go in there and actually close the road. Um, but normally, we're not on a scene that long to close the road. So we just, um, it just, it just informs, informs everybody that, that we're in the roadway.
I have it. It works.
It does?
Yeah, but my truck's a 2020. That's not what it makes. That's not the sound.
Any questions at Mark's while we got him up there? How's your bathroom doing?
They're great.
All done?
Yeah, they're all finished.
You can drive their personal.
Is anyone tall enough to press the button?
I gotta stick.
[laughing]
Oh, okay.
Little bit. Hi, tech.
Right now, we're pretty sure we paid somebody to do that this year, huh?
Oh.
I think I remember signing the invoice.
Oh.
Oh, no.
Guess you're gonna put up with it.
All right, well, we're almost done. Thanks for trying.
Maybe we should get somebody from the fire department to come look at it.
[laughing]
Mary's down on it.
She's on vacation.
I'm on vacation.
Okay, also in your report, you have Director Adelman's monthly report. Uh, if you have any questions, we can get ahold of him, and he can answer anything you want, so. Uh, item 13, reports and communications, Hastings Public Library Board trustees draft minutes on November 3rd. Uh, item B, Berry Elementary School District, regional enhancement millage requests, results breakdown. Entertaining motion to accept those two items and place on file?
I'll make that motion, sir.
Support. Okay, motion by Barlow, supported by Rezegi, to accept items A and B and place on file. All in favor say aye? Aye. Both same. Public comment again. Anybody wanna get up and talk to us again?
I have brochures, or, $100 if you want one.
Phil, who you are, I'll give you three minutes, and if you're a resident.
Yeah, my name is Trevor. I'm not a resident of Hastings. A resident of a neighboring community, a local business owner. And I actually wasn't planning on saying anything, but why I'm here, just kind of full disclosure, is we are looking at the next couple of years doing some significant investment with a couple of our businesses. So I'm looking at local communities of where we may choose to invest in. Um, so I'm trying to learn the, the heartbeat of the local politicians, and how they care about their residents, and how they serve their communities, and that kind of stuff, which I thank you all for doing that. Um, one of the things, again, I'm new to this whole public comment thing. I'm just curious, um, and I don't know if you're able to answer questions, or if this is just strictly comment, but, um, how do we as residents, that's something I'm, I'm trying to figure out, is as residents or potential residents, how do we have dialogue with our local officials? Um, like even, not to put her on the spot, but the lady here talking about chickens, she sounds like has a lot of information. Uh, wanted to talk a little bit during the, the session there, and was, by one of the board members, was giving the finger, like, kind of like a shush type of thing. Um, so that's kind of my question, and something that I hope to learn tonight, is how do we dialogue with, you know, our potential elected officials? And, um, if I were a resident, I mean, I would be a little more passionate about it, but I, I don't know if you guys are able to answer that question for me?
No.
No? Okay. All righty. Well, thank you for at least hearing that I'd like that question answered, and we'll be in company at some point.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, mayor and council comment. I'm gonna comment first to this gentleman. Uh, we're all, if you get on the city website, everyone that's on this board has a phone number. Uh, we have an email address, and we've been more than happy to meet with you. If you're gonna move to town, I, I'm, I'm gonna welcome you right now, 'cause we are welcoming you to town. Now, this lady here with the chickens, she was able to come in and talk to our coding enfor, uh, code enforcement guy and our, uh, Dan King. Uh, we're all, if you get on the city website, everyone that's on this board has a phone number. Uh, we have an email address, and we've been more than happy to meet with you. If you're gonna move to town, I, I'm, I'm gonna welcome you right now, 'cause we are welcoming you to town. Now, this lady here with the chickens, she was able to come in and talk to our coding, uh, code enforcement guy and our, uh, Dan King, uh, zoning, uh, zoning administrator, and she got all the information through them. She wasn't happy with exactly the information she got, but we're gonna work on that. And, uh, anytime anybody wants to come in, if you come into Hastings and you wanna see the mayor at city hall and I'm not here, everybody has my number downtown, I live about eight blocks from here. If you wanna meet me, like, tomorrow at nine o'clock, let me know, and I'll be here. And that, and that's kind of the way, you know, we are, you know, we're, we're a very friendly community, you know, we're, uh, we'll bend over backwards to help out where we can, you know, and, uh, anyhow, that's kind of where it's at, and, uh, I'm glad to see somebody is running already. Uh, I would invite you to come to as many council meetings as you can, because we livestream the meetings, and I'm not gonna tell you can't get up and talk during public comment, 'cause you can't. We have two public comments, but, uh, we'll welcome you to. I'm really looking forward to getting my new snoutzer up and getting a picture taken for Santa Claus, that's a lot of fun. I really, I really, everybody, if you have an animal, well, Jim Carey's got goats, so. But, you know, anyhow, uh, any comments tonight, Terry?
I, military, former military?
Nope.
You are. Good for you. Uh, tomorrow, our day, we should take the day off.
Yeah.
Veterans, all veterans tomorrow should have the day off. I don't, but we should. Congratulations to all of us.
Thank you.
That was it.
Norman?
No, I don't, thank you.
Pardon? Becky?
I do have the day off, and I was gonna say, also, I wasn't really holding my finger up to shush her. I was telling her to hold on, because I knew once the conversation got started, some of the answers to her questions, um, because she can't comment during that time, so I, I didn't mean to shush you. But yes, our numbers are published, I wrote that down as well, I wanted you to know that.
Ann?
No, I, I am interested in finding out more about the chickens. I, I don't blame people for wanting to do more in this day and age.
John?
Uh, nothing at this time, other than I'm gonna take the day off for Terry tomorrow.
Mike?
Me too.
Nothing, your honor. I just wanted to, I thought about this after I made my statement. Public comment is only public comment, you know, I'd like to answer, but what happens when you start answering people during public comment, you start debating things, you know, so, you know, usually what happens, and I've told, I've told everybody this before, if you get up there and make a public comment and, and nothing is said about it, the next day, the city manager has a staff meeting, and the items that are talked about in this meeting are brought up there, so it's not like it's falling on deaf ears, so. Anyhow, any other comments?
I'll make the motion to go into closed session.
Okay, let me read this first. Consider entering into closed session, section eight D of the Michigan Open Meetings Act to consider the purchase of or lease of real property up to the time, up to the time and option to purchase or lease that real property is obtained. Do I hear a motion to go into, uh, closed session?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, support.
Okay, motion by McLean, supported by Devroy, to go into closed session. Will we come back out? Do we have to vote on it?
We will. We do have to vote on going into closed session, yes.
Pardon me?
He asked if we were voting to go into closed session, we do have to do a roll call vote.
Right.
And then you had asked if we were going to come back out to open session, I think is what you had asked, and we do have to do that in order to formally adjourn the meeting.
Okay. Okay, roll call.
Barlow?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Brem?
Yes.
Devroy?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Rezegi?
Yes.
Stensel Burton?
Yes.
Tassava?
Yes.
I know, that's very annoying.